Is Haley over there? Is that a little?
Okay.
All right, Dennis, you got your phone on?
No, I didn't, I don't.
That's true.
Thanks for reminding me.
It's like we're in a movie.
Yeah. It's probably just my wife.
That's all.
I don't know. I'll check. Turn it off.
On the side.
On the side.
Eric, do you want to?
It's recording.
It's recording.
I'll check.
Hello, everyone. I'm Patrick Gale. I'm a lawyer attorney. And I've been asked to work with the annual reports, so I'm with regard to this hearing. This is an appropriate time for us to start the appeal hearing and to present evidence as you, Attorney Gale, or Ms. Grousne, are going to present evidence regarding the matter. Ms. Grousne is right to decide whether to have this hearing in public session or executive session. I believe, based on our prior conversations, Attorney Gale, should you like to have it in public session?
That's correct.
Terrific. Well, we'll continue in public session. The recording is happening, and it will continue. And feel free to approach the table and address the board of selection as you wish.
We're going to add one more chair.
Have it off.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is John Gale. I'm an attorney at Hartford. I'm representing Tess Grousne. This afternoon with me is Rebecca Abrams, who's an intern in our office. Foolishly, Rebecca is considered going to law school. And I see my regular table here, everyone. In any event, she asked if she, and she's been insisting on this matter, so she asked if she'd come. So I see we all have the packet that I handed out. And with your permission, I would just like to go through it. I'm not sure, I assume somebody here is sort of the official clerk of the meeting. And I would take my original exhibits and give them to the clerk.
Okay.
Whoever that might be.
Attorney General will serve as the clerk.
Yep.
Okay.
That would be you. Okay. So we'll, did I give you the original package already?
You gave me five in green envelopes, and you gave me one set.
One set, okay.
If you need it back, you just say the word.
No, we've killed a lot of trees, so we're good.
Okay. And that's what you want entered into record?
That's what I'd like entered into the record. There are exhibit A through K. Everybody's received a copy of all of them. By the way, before you start, I parked my car on the other side of this building. And as I did, I saw, and I think one of you pulled in and had an electric car. And I said, wow! Because I now own an electric car. So I have heightened, I have heightened attention to where there are chargers. So go, you know, good for the town being over, good for you having the charger. I assume all of these things are going to be good. Anyway, Tess Grousne. So I presented to you with a short memorandum. I'm just going to go through those facts again and then wrap up with my argument as to those facts. So Exhibit A that you have are the minutes of your August 12th regular meeting where there was a proposal to hire Tess Grousne as the community and senior center director. And that proposal was passed by the board that evening. Same time, the employment agreement was approved in five all vote. And it looks like the next day, August 13th, Ms. Grousne and Mr. Anderson, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Anderson then signed the employment agreement. And you have the employment agreement as Exhibit B. And this is what, you know, we'll call a contract between the town and Tess Grousne. And this employment agreement is specific in that it has a term. The term commenced the day of the sign, August 13th, 2024, and it indicated that it would continue until June 30th of 2026. And that's very significant to our art position here today. On December 19th, at her request, I believe Tess had a performance review done by Mr. Anderson. And that performance review is attached as Exhibit C. You can see there the various comments that were made. Check rock. She got a couple of excellence, she got two excellence, four goods, and one satisfactory. And then there were five pages of comments, which seem reasonably laudatory to me, but I leave it to you to make your own judgments on that. On January 13th, the board approved an extension of the agreement for a period of three months. Now, I did indicate in my statement of facts that this does not seem to be authorized anywhere. Now, clearly, I'd have to stand corrected on any statement of fact that I make, or statement a lot of them make. But as far as I could tell from reviewing any of the town's handbook or charter, policy handbook or charter, I could not find where this is authorized anywhere. Nonetheless, the town took that action. And we have those minutes as given D. And the town noted that this was a probationary, probationary period. And again, upon my review of the town personnel policy handbook and the town charter, there is a six-month probationary period that is referenced. And it's referenced on page seven of your personnel policy, which I attached as Exhibit J. But that probationary period seems to be specific to employees at will. And you also have, in your personnel policy, a definition of employees at will. And the definition of employees at will very specifically says, and this is page four of your personnel policy, also in Exhibit J, it says, "Those employees who do not have an individualized written employment contract are considered employees at will." Well, Exhibit B sure looks to the world like it is an individualized written employment contract. It's very specific to Tess Grousne. It's in writing, and it's an employment contract, employment agreement. So it's certainly our position that as an employee, Tess was not an employee at will, and therefore, the provisions of the probationary period that are in the town policy manual do not seem to apply. They seem to apply only to employees at will. And, you know, that's page seven, that's in Exhibit J. And, you know, that's where it tells you the first 180 days, not 90. It says 180. I didn't find 90 anywhere. But it says first 180 days shall be an introductory period. But it then says after successful completion of the introductory period, employment with the town is at will. Well, this is not employment at will. This is employment under a written employment agreement. An individualized employment. So, that said though, the board did extend all the probationary periods. On February 10th, Tess attended the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And she asked the question that we have all just been discussing. Where's this probationary period fat to be found? So I gave you the minutes of that meeting. They're attached to Exhibit E. Suffice it to say, at least from Tess's perspective, no one ever related to her where that language was to be found. And we've not otherwise found it. So then, on April 14th, at regular board monthly meeting, the board set an date to further review the agreement that it had with Ms. Grousne. And that, those minutes are set forth as Exhibit F. Three days later, on April 17th, there was a special meeting. It was called a contract and operational review. So this was a contract and operational review that was conducted in executive session, employer, employee discussion, if you will. Ms. Grousne was present. She was questioned. And there was apparently quite a bit of back and forth discussion. But she was not advised that there was anything that was a problem that she was facing in the discipline. She wasn't told that she could bring witnesses, or that she needed, that she could defend herself. And I summarize that by saying, in short, she was not afforded what we call due process rights. And I'll talk about that a little bit later on. And so you have those minutes as well, and of course, you were all there for whatever. You would remember all of these things. But we do have the, we do have the minutes, we have the written memorandum of the meeting. On April 24th, there was another special meeting that was held. And at this meeting, there was then a motion made, apparently, to terminate the employment of Tess Grousne from the town. And that motion was approved 3 to 2. And we have those minutes. And so, subsequent to that action, Ms. Grousne was effectively terminated from employment at the town. On July 8th, having hired our law firm to represent her, we sent the letter to the town seeking to appeal that decision. And that appeal is based on the, on the policy of the town. I provided to you again in Exhibit J. Exhibit J has all the sections of the town personnel policy that I thought were relevant here. And so Exhibit J, pages, I have pages 18, 19, and 20, which are pages of the employee discipline. And on page 20 is where it indicates that any employee who wants to appeal their discharge can appeal it to the board of selection. And so that's, that's my view, anyway, of what we're doing here today. That we've appealed her discharge to the board of selection, and this is that appeal hearing. It's interesting to note that this employee discipline section that starts on page 18 very specifically discusses at-will employees, at-will employees, and says this is, this is what's applicable to at-will employees, and specifically exempts anybody under a contract. So that's what we're doing here. So having seen that that was the, the policy of the town, that an appeal was, we were able to make an appeal as an attorney out of an abundance of caution, certainly, Ms. Grousne should take advantage of any administrative remedies that she has before seeking to go further. We have a lot of case law during the Gale, and you're very familiar with these kinds of things. We have a lot of case law that indicates you have an administrative remedy, you should take advantage of that administrative remedy. So we're here to take advantage of that administrative remedy. And we're here to ask you, Board of Selectmen, to reinstate Tess Grousne to the job for which she was hired. Now, what's our basis for this? And this is, you know, I really did a lot of thinking about this. Because this case implicates some really fundamental principles. And the fundamental principles are contracts. You really, you know, it's fascinating, but this goes right back to the United States Constitution. Written writing to the United States Constitution in Section 10, Article 1, it says that government shall not pass any laws impairing contracts. This is how important contracts and contract law has been to this country from its very beginning. And the lawyers here will, will know that as first-year law students, we have five courses that you take. One in criminal law, one in civil procedure, one in property, one in torts for your personal harms, and the fifth one, two semester course, is contracts. A real aside for anybody that remembers the Paper Chase movie, some of you played it. The movie starts with the case of Hopkins v. McGee, which was the very first contracts case in my contracts, Hornbook. And I think my professor must have spent two months, we call it the case of the hairy hand. The professor must have spent two months on that case. But contracts, very, you know, it's very basic. It's basic to American law. When we talk about employment, we really have three types of employment for anybody. I mean, this is not just the town, but this is true for anybody, any employer. In Connecticut, the three types of employment are, as we've discussed in a minute, well, employment under a labor contract. So this is the whole advent of labor unions and collective bargaining, and coming as a group negotiating a written contract. And the third contract we have is the individual written employment contract. And it's that individual written employment contract that we are dealing with. That's Exhibit C. That's the contract that Mr. Anderson signed with Ms. Grousne, with the approval of the law. And that contract comes with a lot of rights. As I mentioned, contracts are sacrosanct under the United States Constitution. And, excuse me, just a second. I'm wetting my whistle here. So because contracts are so important, and because you're a government, we have a whole body of case law that's developed around how you terminate a written employment contract. And it's very clear that a written employment contract can only be terminated by a government. And by the way, that contracts clause that's in the United States Constitution, there's plenty of case law that says that applies to states and municipalities. No question, this applies to the town of Amber. So how do you terminate that? Well, you terminate it on the basis of something known as either good cause or just cause. Clausation, gotta be something. It's not the case that a private employer who can simply terminate somebody at will, or even the town, can terminate somebody at will for no reason, as long as it's not an illegal reason. You can always mention these things. You can tell employers, terminate somebody if you don't like the color of their fingernails, but not if you don't like the color of their skin. That wouldn't be a good reason. But when we're talking about a written contract, the only way you can terminate a written contract is good cause or just cause. And when you're going to terminate a written contract for good cause or just cause, you must provide, what I referred to earlier, due process. These are fundamental concepts. And due process, this was banged into every lawyer's head again and again and again, means notice, notice of what is being charged, and an opportunity to be heard. And you can imagine that those words, notice, and an opportunity to be heard, have been expounded on, you know, thousands, if not millions, of times over the years. What does that mean, a notice? And what does that mean, an opportunity to be heard? But I think that there's general agreement that notice means you're told what the problem is, and the opportunity to be heard means you're given an opportunity to rebut. You're given an opportunity to present witnesses. You're given an opportunity to, to present your side of the story. That's fundamental when people say you're entitled to due process. So with respect to the contract that's in front of you, and the legions in front of you, Tess Grousne, I think there's a problem. I think there's a problem because I don't think that fundamental due process was recognized, was given to Ms. Grousne. And nowhere do we find any cause. Nowhere do we find any specific charges, insubordination, failure to do the job, metrics that were set up that she didn't meet. I mean, the only thing we have is Mr. Anderson's employment review. It's the only thing I have. I mean, you may have more, but the only thing I have is Mr. Anderson's review, which seems reasonably low. So we're here, and we're saying, look, you probably made a mistake. Mistakes can be remedied. That's why we have appeals. This could be a pretty simple remedy. You grant the appeal, you reinstate Ms. Grousne. Obviously, there'd have to be some payments made to her for the payments that she missed up to this point in time. We could certainly have a discussion about those. We can discuss these things with your attorney. It certainly seems that this would be a very efficient way of resolving this matter. And at least from what I've presented, it seems to me that there's, there's not a lot of ability to contribute to what I've said in terms of the failure to give her due process and the failure to point out any just cause. Now, there's a secondary appeal issue here. You know, when lawyers, we like to have multiple, you know, what do they say? You want to have multiple, multiple arrows? The town policy also seems to say, and this may not be what anybody meant, but it's what's in writing, the employment agreement says that termination of Ms. Grousne shall be pursued to Section 701 and 703. It doesn't mention 702. Mention 701, 703. 701 really talks about, Mr. Anderson talks about the town manager. It talks about to terminate the town manager, you need an 80% vote, you need four out of five select persons to vote for that. Well, you know, I didn't write the contract. Town wrote the contract. That's what it says. You may not have meant it, but I think you kind of stuck with it. A reasonable interpretation of the contract is that if you were going to terminate this contract, again, I would maintain you would have to do so providing Ms. Grousne with notice of the charges, an opportunity to present evidence, and you would have to demonstrate, you would have to demonstrate. She doesn't have to. You would have to demonstrate some good or just cause. And then you would have to have an 80% vote, four out of five. Well, the record, not an 80% vote, it was a 3-2 vote. So our second appealable issue, if you will, is that even if you don't buy the whole due process and the whole return, certainly maintains that's the argument, but regardless, you also don't have the 80% vote. So again, we're here to say it appears that the town made a mistake. And mistakes can be remedied, and this may be a really opportune time to remedy that mistake, and everybody will want. Happy to take any questions, but that's the thrust of the argument. It's all kind of laid out for you in our memo. And you have all the exhibits that I referenced in the memo.
Terrific. Anyone on my side here have any questions of Attorney Gale? No? Or none? Attorney Gales, or anything else you'd like to present to the board of selection before the board of selection convenes to discuss what you presented?
No, thank you for that opportunity. I, no, you have our, you have our case.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. What's likely to happen is the board of selection is going to vote, you know, most of executive session, so that it can deliberate the issues before the board of selection, considering legal advice that the board of selection has received through a legal letter that was sent to the board previously. So the Freedom of Information Act, it's a proper discussion, for executive discussion. I'm not sure how long that discussion will be. You're welcome to wait, but you need not. I will let you go as soon as I have a decision, if a decision is made today of the board of selection as to how to respond to the appeal that you filed and arguments you presented today. So I'll leave that up to you. Happy to call you, happy to follow up when the board of selection's made a decision, assuming the decision's made today, if they haven't made the decision today, because they need not, I'll let you know that as well. But by the same token, if you'd like to wait for a while and see how long the discussion's going to be before a decision is going to be made, or before we'll know whether a decision will be made today, you're welcome to do that.
So, yeah, happy, I'm sure we're going to hang on for a certain period of time, anyway. When you call off for sandwiches and pizza, we may decide to do other. Let me give you my telephone number, if I may. Telephone?
Yep.
860?
Yep.
If you text me or whatever, that you vote decision today, reconvenienced in the middle of time, or a decision today, I'd totally appreciate it. If we're hanging around, we'll come back.
Absolutely.
Because I take it, if you come out of executive session, we'll go back on the record.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would want to make a motion. We enter executive session for the purpose of discussion of the documents that were presented to us by Attorney Gale. And I would like to invite Attorney General Eric Anderson, Attorney, Attorney Dennis O'Brien, and Labor Attorney Patrick Gale.
Okay, Anna, how do you do?
Hi.
Carol Lee?
Hi.
Jeff Murray?
Scott Persson.
Hi.
Jeff, the guy with the eye.
We're going to move into executive session here. Turn off the camera. Attorney McHale, you're on.